Mr. Sobian, you're up first. The question we have is, sort of a common theme this evening, I gotta say that. But I can't read with my glasses on. Okay. "How will you better utilize the vendors and small businesses in Austintown?"
Is this? Yeah. Second ago it wasn't on. The question being, how would I better utilize the small businesses and vendors within our district, within the township of Austintown? It is my feeling that they must be the first and foremost that we reach out to when we need supplies here at the schools. We've currently done a lot of reaching outside of our area, whether it be for advertising purposes or supply purposes. Austintown has to be the school board's number one focus.
Thank you. Mr. Kornak.
Local businesses need to provide services to our schools. We need to have more open communication with our local businesses on any needs that we need. I believe that through fundraisers, charitable events, we can make relationships with local businesses to make sure that we can grow the services they provide us that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobach.
Thank you. Most of the small businesses, a lot of them are already involved in the school system by ads and donations now. And a lot of times, I know, I work in a business, you're strapped for funds because you have a budget you have to follow. But I think, you know, approaching the small businesses and see what they could do for your school system is a plus for everybody. And I think you need to get some large donations to some large corporations and a partnership with them to help our school district.
Thank you. Mr. Schornberger.
Well, first of all, I want to make sure that all the small businesses have an awareness of what's available for them to offer us. For those of you that attended the Awesome Austintown event this past weekend, I believe it was about 60 vendors that crowded into the cafeteria to show us, to show the community, what they had to offer. And they were from any kind of product that you might be interested in. That event brings out vendors and showcases them for the community. I think that the community, though, is looking to secure the best value for their dollar. And you have to have a process, which I believe we do, to look at what different vendors have to offer, do comparative shopping, and pick the best value for the district.
Thank you. Mr. Heilmann.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, I think a lot of the small businesses are already involved with the schools. We need to continue to get the businesses that are involved, keep them involved. We also need to better communicate what is available to the businesses and what the district can offer them, and better see what they can offer us as a district. And that's all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. As far as our small businesses, they support us, so we should in turn support them. Again, as Dave even referenced, this past Sunday was a perfect example where we did invite our small businesses into the community celebration of Austintown and the dedication of the new schools. I would like to also offer the suggestion that we should look to our small business owners. They're experienced. Why not use that opportunity for our students to have a mentorship program and learn from the best? They've taken their opportunities and built their business. Have our students go into those businesses and learn from them. Nothing is better than a real-life experience for our students in the district.
Thank you.
Most of the small businesses here in Austintown are Austintown residents. We need to advertise and promote for them so they can give back to us. If we support them, they will support us.
Thank you. Next question is for... Mr. Kornak will begin. This should be a short and easy one. "Have you ever had a child that was homeschooled?"
No.
Okay. Who's next?
No.
Schornberger.
No.
And no.
I think we have one guy. Okay. I think we moved it right down the list here. Yep.
No. And no.
Okay, that was a tough question. We're gonna hopefully come up with a little something different here. Okay. Who's first up on? Mr. Jacobach, you're up first on this one. "How would you advance academics in the school system?"
How do you advance academics in the school system?
That's what it says.
By having tougher curriculum. That's part of the challenge, is that the kids want challenge. You know, when I was on General Science, was in ninth grade, I paid for staff members to go to Worcester High School to see a new innovative science program that involved chemistry and biology integrated with General Science. If anybody had General Science here, you know how boring it was. I paid for four staff members, they in turn adopted it. It was called Science for Today and Tomorrow. You couldn't get into class because it challenged kids. Kids want challenge. And you have to increase your academic standards and your classes. Like in Worcester, they have AEPA Biology. You need to challenge people like that. That's what the kids want. That's what's gonna make them stronger and smarter. And, you know, our school district should always look forward to getting the best academic challenges we could do in our school district in curriculum.
Thank you. Who's next? Leno.
One of the things that have always been important to me in the school district is mentoring. Mentoring new teachers. In 2009, I did some calculations, and I determined that 25 percent of our teaching staff are certified, had four years or under experience. How we can help, how can we help those new teachers make large gains quicker in the classroom? And that is through mentoring. You might be interested to know, with all the changes in STRS and the retirement system for teachers, it encouraged many of them to move on to another career or another life. And because of that, we had, I think, around 20 new teaching positions this year due to retirements. Our same staff is about 31 percent in 2013 as it was in 2009. There again, there's an opportunity to mentor the younger teachers, get them the skills and the things that they need to get them to make larger gains quicker in the classroom. Also, we talked a little bit about STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. That's something that brings out the creativeness in our students. We've continued that. That brings out the collaboration skills in our students. We've revamped curriculum in our schools. We are one of, I believe, 45 states that establish a core curriculum. Very important, and we can't dummy that curriculum down. We have to make it tougher and more engaging for our students.
Time.
The question was, how can we better advance academics? With that, again, I mean, everything that I can say has really already been said, but I will touch on a couple of things. Students do want a challenge. I wanted a challenge when I went to school. I was actually encouraged by my brother to get involved in the TV studio, which is hands-on learning. And that's fantastic, and it helped me get through high school. Because I was so involved in that, I wanted to be in school every day, and I wanted to continue to learn and do the best that I can at learning. Programs like the STEM program that we have introduced in the district, those are great as well. And I also just want to take a second to say that I think we have one of the best teaching staffs, if not the best, in the state. And, you know, that's something to be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do believe that we have a rigorous curriculum in place here in the Austintown Local School District. If you don't know, we even have dual credits, where our students at the high school level, their classes that they are taking, we have excellent teachers who are certified to do just that. And the course, when they complete, is also then equivalent to a college-level class. So again, it's a great opportunity, it's a financial opportunity for parents as well, to get that course opportunity. Also, as far as rigor, core curriculum, again, that is not a federal mandate, that's state-mandated. And it was math and language arts, but then Ohio, we decided we're gonna up it that much more, and we added science and social studies as well. So again, do we have rigor here in the Austintown Local School District? Yes, we do. Our students are highly prepared to go out into the career world and college as well.
Technology. It's the future, and it's fun for the kids. And our new schools feature technology, so we are way ahead of most schools in our area.
I feel much as Kenny does, by making sure we have a tougher curriculum and challenging the children, but also by adding in the different learning and teaching disciplines. Every child learns at a different rate. Every child learns in a different manner. By adding in apprenticeships and internships as well. By partnering with technology, but also by making sure our students have the needed educational supplies, much like textbooks.
First off, we need to make sure teachers have the tools to teach. We need to make sure that, I feel the students will be more engaged if we use tech, all the options out of technology-wise. iPads, smartphones, new laptops. If we bring in all those various technologies, I think the students will be more engaged. They already use it outside of school. So if we utilize that technology, I think that would make the student more engaged and more willing to be up to the challenge.
Okay, the next question is addressed to Mr. Schornberger. This was, you get to start this one. "The Austintown Board of Education paid $35,000 to a Toledo marketing firm to promote Austintown schools when there are local marketing firms. Do you believe our tax dollars should be spent to Toledo when we need jobs here in the valley?"
One of the things that we did in the local school district and identified was a need for communication. Communication about the importance of public schools, the key role that they have, and they are the cornerstone of this country, public schools are. We needed a way to get that message out. There was a company that we had worked with in other areas that had done a good job. We looked to them for this help, and we found out after a period of time that we weren't getting the help that we thought we would. So we pulled back from that. I would also mention that we went to the different school districts in Mahoney County to ask them if they would join us in a partnership for communication. Now, this was three to four years ago. I feel that we were ahead of our time in doing that. Today, you see billboards promoting non-publics, you see advertisements on TV promoting non-publics. We felt that that was gonna be something that needed to be done, so we went to the different school districts in Mahoney County. There wasn't any interest, to be quite honest.
Thirty seconds.
And then that's when we went to the marketing firm. Since then, that's changed. I can tell you that we have established a shared service for communications with Austintown, well, certainly Austintown, but Boardman Cantfield and Struthers in the county. We share a person that is a communications expert, something we wanted to do three or four years ago. And that's currently in place now.
Well, firstly, I have an issue with us spending $35,000 to find out how to market our school system. So the answer to the question, no, I don't think that we should have went to a Toledo company to learn how to market our school system, when we have experts around Austintown, in Austintown and around this community that could have helped us there. If it was an absolute necessity, which I don't believe it was, to go to a marketing firm, we should absolutely be looking at local firms first.
Thank you.
I think that everyone would agree today that schools are competing one against the other. You can drive around different communities, you can see billboards where they are publicizing what each of their districts have to offer, whether it's public or non-public. You can also see on television as well that there are school districts, public or non-public, also advertising. They want students for their particular schools. Can I say that we did try an outside entity to promote our district? Yes, we did. Were we happy with the product? No, we were not. So we chose to go a different route. And now, through the ESC, and as Dave Schornberger mentioned, where there are some other districts who are also partnering with us, so that is a good thing. We are sharing the service, and we are getting the word out about our Austintown schools. Thank you.
I'm not real familiar with the Toledo company that you're talking about, but if we do have local companies, we should be checking and using those companies. At that time, they may have been the best company out there for what we were looking for. Locally, we have to stay here. We have to stick with our own people and do what we can to keep our support in our community.
Thank you.
I personally have a huge issue with spending $35,000 with a Toledo firm to build an ad package to draw students into our district and spend minimal amount of funding to find out why we're losing our own. That $35,000 would have been better spent on the research here in Austintown to find out why so many of our students are leaving and addressing those issues.
I'm sure that $35,000 could have been spent locally and probably at a cheaper rate. I personally don't agree with spending $35,000 and trying to promote our schools. I'd rather see that $35,000 be spent on an extra teacher to keep our classroom rates of students in there down.
The question was asked earlier about small businesses and partnerships. What kind of message are you sending to them when you're getting a firm out of Toledo? I mean, my God. We got all these companies in Youngstown, Ohio, all around the area. Let's go with them first. It'd be like getting a company from Cleveland and negotiate their contract. What the heck do they give a darn after they leave here, what happens to this school district?
Okay, the next question would be... Mr. Heilmann. "The Board of Education voted to extend the superintendent's contract another five years when there was still one year remaining on his contract. Do you believe that was the right decision?"
I do not. And the reason for that is, with him already having a year left on the contract at that time, I think five years is too long for a contract in as important of a position as like our superintendent. So no, I do not think that was the right decision, and I would not have made that decision.
Thank you.
As far as the contract of the superintendent, and this is a personnel issue, which I really think is, this is not an appropriate place to get into great detail, but I can tell you that we do have a system in place. We have an evaluation process, as I'm sure that most public or private sectors do, with a CEO of a business or a superintendent of a district. We look, we have goals, we have standards and elements, and we each, as an individual board member, on our own, rank the superintendent according to performance. We come together as a board, we have a discussion, and then we have a sit-down with the superintendent halfway through the year. Then we go on to the end of the academic year, and the same process is in place, individually, on our own. We look at those standards, those goals, those elements, and rate the superintendent. And then again, we come together, discuss, and have a face-to-face conversation with the superintendent. Looking at the size of the school district, 5,400 students, just the daily operation is a big job in itself. But then when you throw in the responsibility of the construction process that began in 2010, that's quite a large job to do. So for that reason, we considered and put in place that contract.
Thank you.
At that time, he was evaluated and was ranked and passed with high marks by the entire For five years, with everything that was going on, it seemed to be a pretty good fit, being he had gone through construction and Struthers, he moved right into here, had the same situation here. He was under Mr. Hoyer as Director of Curriculum. He had that going for him. All of that was all put in place, and everything just moved right along. I had no problem with that.
Thank you.
The question was, would we vote on that if we were on the board? My answer is no. I do not feel giving any member of the administration a five-year contract while they still have a year left on their contract being a wise fiscal move, especially with there being no way out of it for the district, but that administrator can get up and walk at any time without penalties. I have even bigger issue with it when we force our educators and our school staff to go nine months on an expired contract and hold an open job fair in the middle of those negotiations.
I would have never approved a five-year contract. I think that's too long.
Do I agree with the five-year? No. Sixteen years I was on, we gave our principals and everybody else two-year contracts, and we would do that in the last year of their final contract, not a little ahead of time. But five-year, I think, is too much.
I want to talk a little bit more about this evaluation process that we established as a board. And I believe we were the second school district in Mahoney County, behind West Branch, to establish a very elaborate evaluation process for the superintendent. Now, we moved, in doing this, we moved from kind of an archaic yes-no-sometimes kind of ranking. This, as Mrs. Mock has said, was quite extensive, and it looked at skills and weaknesses. It was not something you could do in two hours, or one day, or sometimes two days. It involved a workshop, usually during the summer, and it, we did do it two times a year. So it was a rather exhaustive effort. We got some skill training on doing this from the county. They came out, and we were glad we did, because it provided a much better skill assessment and evaluation of our leader. Do I agree with providing a contract? What was on the table at that time? We were an excellent school district. We were fiscally responsible when other districts were not, and they were looking for ways to get money. We were a large school district, and we had passed a bond issue for two new schools.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Next question, Mrs. Mock, you're up. It's a fairly long question, so bear with me. "In a recent SurveyMonkey.com survey conducted by the administrators of Facebook group Austintown School Bus Parents, 34.69 percent of the respondents claimed they have a K-3 child who was previously picked up at their driveway but is now required to go to a bus stop. Austintown School Administration officials state that nothing has changed in all, it was never the practice of the school district to pick up K-3 children at their driveway. What is your position on whether or not a practice policy change was made from K-3 driveway pickups to intersection bus stops? Also, what is your position on safety concerns raised at K-3 children being picked up and dropped off at an intersection bus stops or in more danger than if they were picked up and dropped off at their driveways?"
Right off the top, I just want to address and say, as far as students ever being picked up at each and every single one of their driveways, that has not been the case. We've done a lot of research, we've talked to folks out into the community. I can tell you from my own experience with my children, that has never been the case as far back as I know, and other folks who are much older than I am in the district, that we had driveway pickups. Another thing that I would like to say, as far as busing with our children, when we as parents decide to have children, it's a responsibility. And when it is time for them to attend school, I have said this and I will say it again, it is a partnership with our schools. Parents have a responsibility in this partnership to get their child to that school bus stop. And then we, as a school district, when those children get on that bus, it's our job to get them safely to school so they can learn in a safe environment. Then when the school day is over, we put them back on the bus, and then it's the parents' responsibility to get them from the bus back to their place of safety in their home. Thank you.
I rode a school bus back a long time ago, and I was standing in a corner doing that. I have never, I've had kids of our own, I have never seen anyone get picked up at their own driveway. Maybe if you had a huge block to block, somebody might be getting picked up in their driveway because it's in the middle of the block, that's one thing. Austintown has communities, all of their little communities and their neighborhoods. I don't know of any one of those neighborhoods that has a one-mile distance from corner to corner. The kids are not going that far. I went out and watched my granddaughter get on the bus the first day. You walk out to the corner with her, everybody has porches now. If the weather's bad, you stand on your porch, you watch the bus come down the street, and your kids run out to the corner. I've never, ever, since 1960, known that there were people getting picked up at their driveway.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I can only speak on the past 10 years. My first year here in Austintown, we lived on Idaho Road, right down the, right down the street from the schools. It was the first year that my son Kyle, who's now 15, this is his first day of school. Where was he picked up at? At the end of the driveway. I can't speak on the rest of the community. I do personally feel that K-3, if at all possible, should be picked up in the driveways. Once again, if at all possible. We have a lot of roads that our buses cannot go up and turn around in.
My whole tender tenure at Austown Schools, I was picked up at my driveway, and I've moved twice. So I did see kids who rode the bus that were picked up at corners. But to say that young children should be picked up, especially K-3, at busy intersections is ridiculous. They have no business standing at the intersection waiting for a bus stop. I understand that consolidating the bus stops saves money, but not the expense of our child's safety.
Since I'm the senior one up here, I don't remember everybody getting picked up at each stop. But my concern is with the young children, they're our livelihood. We could, we should be able to do something to make it a little, the pickups a little closer to their homes. You know, we have a school schedule. Does everybody have to get out at 2:37? Can't we adjust the schedule five or 10 minutes to allow a few more stops? We could do that during the offseason. You know, I'm sensitive to busing. I had a first-grade cousin that was killed getting off a bus on Lockwood. My own sister almost lost her life getting off a bus on Morquess Boulevard. So I am very sensitive to the busing issues. And if I have to adjust the time schedule of this school district, five minutes to get these kids on the bus safer, I would like to do that. Let's just, you know, add a few more stops. I don't care if it costs us more money, that's our children.
Thank you.
Yeah, like many of the respondents at this point, I don't have any recollection of driveway pickups. of driveway pickups. I've asked people, I've asked former students, I've asked staff members, teachers, if they have any recollection, and they have none. You know, there are partnerships in the school district, and some of those partnerships are with the parent, and hoping that the parent informs students of safe practices. You can be, we had the Awesome Town event, and in the middle, between the two parking lots, our people from Transportation had a school bus, and they conducted a little clinic on safe, safe bus riding. We can do those kind of things, but it, in the end, is a partnership with car drivers cooperating, students cooperating, parents cooperating, all doing their part.
Well, like Rob, I was also picked up at my driveway through the years that I rode a school bus. Now, there were some students that lived, you know, my neighbors that also went to school that would walk to my driveway, and for a time purpose, I can understand having driveway pickups where you do have neighbor children there. At intersections, no. I do not think that we should be having pickups at intersections where cars are there. It's putting the children of Austintown in an unnecessary risk. We can move those stops down a little bit further, have them outside of a driveway, and still have, make sure that the kids are safe.